Good evening. We're going to get started here, and I'll call to order the City of West Bend Licensing Board for March 15th. Note that we have three items on the agenda, and we do have a quorum. The first being approval of the minutes, the Licensing Board Regular Meeting Minutes for March 1st.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I'll have Alderman Butch like take item number two, as I will be abstaining.
Appointment of Agent Michael J. Zorzen, Quick Trip LLC, Quick Trip number 1002, 806 South Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, John. And we'll go to number three, a secondhand article license for Just Between Friends, Robin Tremmel, for an event at 1291 West Paradise Drive on March 24th, 2021 through March 27th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motioned second. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Having no further business for the Licensing Board, I will adjourn. And we'll take things a little out of order. We'll call to order the City of West Bend Common Council meeting for March 15th. And notice that we do have a quorum with all Aldermen present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I'll note that we have 29 items on our agenda, the first being the approval of the minutes, the regular common council meeting minutes of March 1st.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Model and Allen. Any corrections or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we'll move on to why we have a nice packed house here tonight. Item number two, oath of office for firefighter/paramedic Brian Diener. And we'll have Chief Kudak start us off.
Aye, Brian Diener.
Aye, Brian Diener.
Have been appointed.
Have been appointed.
As firefighter/paramedic.
As firefighter/paramedic.
In the city of West Bend.
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of set office.
The duties of set office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Brian's son Logan is going to do his pinning. Just a little bit about Brian. Brian comes to us from Sheboygan. He attended Lakeshore Technical College, and he got his paramedic license in 2012. He then moved to the city of West Bend and worked for a private ambulance as a paramedic. He then went back to school, became a registered nurse, worked for a few years up at St. Joe's Hospital, or Freiter now, as an emergency room nurse, and decided that he was, half of his life was unfulfilled, so he decided to become firefighter and fulfill that other half. So he's, we're excited to welcome Brian, and his son Logan is going to do the pinning. So Logan, are you all set?
Normally, we'd come through, and Brian would shake everybody's hand, but due to the circumstances in COVID, Brian will just wave to you.
meeting for motor pump operator Larry Schwackel. Next month, April 16th will be his last day. He's retired from the fire department. He has 12, about 26 years as a full-time firefighter, and four years as a paid-on-call firefighter. And we just want to wish Larry well as he takes the next chapter in his life.
Thank you, and congrats to both. With that, I will recess the common council meeting to Public Works.
I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We have eight items on the agenda. First is approval of minutes from March 1, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, permission to advertise contract 2107, water utility pavement repairs at various locations. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you very much. This item is to advertise a contract to allow pavement repairs where the water utility would have had to do water main repairs throughout the city. We do this contract every year. Water main breaks happen, especially during the winter, but even throughout the year. And the water utility crews go in and dig where needed to repair those pipes. So they have the capability to go down, repair the pipes, backfill. But for the pavement repairs, we usually hire a contractor who just does those repairs by batches. So we build the contract where we have a series of repairs, and the contractor will go over a week and do those, usually the last week of June, last week of July, last week of August, et cetera, throughout the season. And so this contract can go up to the end of the year, since we can't really predict when and where water breaks will happen. So budgeted water utility funds will be used for this contract. And Water Utility did ask us to investigate whether we could do a multi-year contract. Our consultant, Concall Engineering, has been working with contractors and with the city attorney to see if that would be a possibility that would work for both sides. So if we end up going that route, we may bid this contract as a two-year contract. However, if we don't, I have a schedule in there for you indicating when we would be doing the advertisement for bids and the construction for this year.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, any questions for Max? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Max. Award contract number three, award contract 2101, 7th Avenue Reconstruction, Walnut Street to Washington Street. Max?
Thank you again. So this is the contract to reconstruct 7th Avenue from Walnut Street to Washington Street. And we received bids for this contract on Friday, March 5, and we received seven bids. Two of the bids did not include the signed addendum, and so those bids were not read. So the list on your memo is the list of the five remaining bids that were open and read at that meeting. The pre-bid estimate was approximately $2.4 million without contingency, and it includes replacing existing water main, repairing sanitary sewer, replacing storm sewer, and of course, reconstructing the road with a concrete pavement. We reviewed the bids, and we reviewed the qualification of Vinton Construction Company, who is the low bidder on our list. Vinton has done work for the city in the past, and we were satisfied with their work. And so we find them capable of performing the work described in the document. We would use budgeted pavement maintenance program funds, water utility funds, and sewer utility funds to fund the project. Therefore, we recommend that the Board award contract 2101 in the amount of $1,556,171.01 to Vinton Construction Company at the unit prices listed in their bid, and a contingency fund to bring the total allocation of the contract to $1,655,000.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any questions for Max? If none, all those in favor?
What?
Oh, go ahead. Sorry, Randy.
It's a question, Max. Normally, you guys are pretty close on your pre-bid estimate. How did we miss this while my almost a million bucks?
So I looked at the bids, and I can provide, I did a comparison spreadsheet on those, which I can provide you with the details by item of which items were below. But the main ones that I found were the road base, where we are 48,000 below. The concrete pavement, we found the PVC pipe on the water main and on the sanitary sewer. I remember a few years ago that the price for PVC pipe seemed to get higher. It looks like this year it's back down. And I will note that, I also noticed that this runs in the Forest Avenue contract, which we'll talk about later. And so we have a spread of little discrepancies, like we usually have differences between our prices and the contractor. But the big amounts were in those, the road base, the concrete pavement, the PVC pipe, even the copper pipe for the water laterals. And then, so that's where I found the big items on this contract.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. If there are no more questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four, award contract 2103, Forest Avenue Reconstruction, Lidwood Terrace to Water Street.
Thank you again. So this is a contract that I just mentioned with my previous comment. It's a contract to reconstruct Forest Avenue from Lindwood Terrace to Water Street. We received bids on Friday, March 5. We received five bids for this contract. And the work consists of replacing water main, replacing sanitary sewer and storm sewer, and fully reconstructing the street from sidewalk to sidewalk. The pre-bid estimate was 1.4 million about, and we would use TIF 12 funds to fund this project. We reviewed all the bids, and we reviewed the qualification of PTS contractors, which is the low bidder in our list. They have not done work for the city in the past, so we consulted with other communities where they've done work, similar work in the recent years. We made calls to four communities directly, and we also consulted with Mitch Lyses, our representative for Concall Engineering, who is our in-house consultant, who has done work with PTS contractors in other communities. Based on the feedback from all these references, we find that PTS contractors is capable of performing the work described in the contract documents. Therefore, we would recommend that the Board award contract 2103 in the amount of $1,021,531 to PTS contractors with a contingency for total allocation not to exceed $1,086,000 for the construction of this project. I did mention the difference in cost between the pre-bid estimate and the actual contractor's bid. I have some notes in there, like I said, found lower prices on the PVC pipes and water items like the valves. But also, I noticed that there is along the west side of Forest Avenue, an existing underground foundation wall that runs along probably half the project. We have an item in there to remove that wall down to a certain elevation. And the amount that we thought the contractor was going to charge was much higher in the pre-bid estimate than in the actual estimate. I'm guessing they figured we'll be banging around with our backhoe anyway. We'll probably be going to take this as we're digging for other things. And maybe that's where the price was so low for this item. So based on all this, oh, I already said that, sorry. So I would, I would ask the Board and Council to award the contract as I described earlier.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any questions for Max? Yes, Alderman Taylor.
Just a quick one here, Max. In the future, when we have larger projects like this, would it make any sense to bid them as a package? One, two, or three to the same contractor, possibly saving us money, or does that make no?
So we have looked at this on smaller contracts. And what happens is that when we've done that, we kind of prevent smaller contractors of bidding on the smaller contracts. These contracts are about the size of contracts that we regularly do in West Bend, and we're used to the contractors that are coming for this side of, this size of contracts. If we try to lump a bunch of contracts together and get, we will get bigger contractors, maybe contractors that we're not used to working with, and then we will, we will lose a lot of bidders. We might get, because obviously, there's a lot of small fish, and there's like a few big fish. So we'll get a few contractors. Maybe our bids will not be as good. I don't know if you noticed, but in the Forest Avenue bidding, we have five bids, and we have three of them that are within $8,000 for a million dollar a project. Between the four lowest bids, it's all within $40,000, $47,000. So it's very competitive, because we have mini bidders. If we try to go bigger, I'm concerned we might get one or two bidders and not get that competition. So we have looked at that, and we feel that we're in a place that is appropriate for us.
Okay. I do see the bids were very competitive, that, you know, we didn't have anybody out of line, so. Okay, thanks.
Alderman Allen?
Yeah, Max, have we ever looked at speeding up these projects? In other words, going and saying, okay, we think it's going to take this long, but you can get a bonus by, I mean, we, we, the whole time these projects are going on, we're getting calls from constituents. Oh, it's, you know, why is it torn up for so long? Why does it take? Well, I know why it takes that long, because these guys bid 12, 15 jobs all over the place. And there's no incentive right now to do this one over that one. So they tend to bounce around, and there's, you know, weeks at a time where there's like nothing done. And, and, you know, yes, they still meet the begin-end criteria. But have we ever looked at saying, hey, we'd like to get this done faster? Can you, you know, if you do it, you know, in this timeframe, we'll give you a 5% bonus, or whatever.
Okay. So we have not, the city of West Bend, to my knowledge, has not looked into giving incentives for meeting an earlier deadline. I know that the DOT, they do incentives. I'm not sure if they do it on deadline. I know they do it for the quality of ride, for example, once they are done paving. You have a truck run with the equipment in there that will feel the vibrations, and you have a range. If you stay within the range, you get an extra 2% or whatever that is. As far as the time that it takes, it is true that recently, about two years ago, we had a contractor who had trouble staying on schedule, and that was unusual for us. The way we typically determine the time it takes to do things, we follow the DOT standards. They have a spreadsheet that has, based on construction standards, it takes, in one day, you can lay out so many linear feet of sanitary sewer, so many feet of water main, storm sewer, same thing, manholes, et cetera. So once we enter our quantities in that spreadsheet, it will tell us, okay, if you want to build the sanitary sewer, it will take you so many days, so many weeks. Same thing for every item of construction. And then we put those together in that spreadsheet and figure out a schedule to see how long the project will take. It's something that is pretty involved. It takes into account the working days, so it doesn't count the weekends, it doesn't count the holidays. So we do spend the time to determine a fair amount of time that will be needed to do the project. And based on that, we will say, this is a 60-day project, this is a 75-days project, this is a 90-day project. And then we have the contractor, we put that in the contract, you will do this work within so many days. And then the contractor base, bid based on that. So unfortunately, I would love to be able to make this happen faster. But again, we're following standard of construction that the DOT is following, that a bunch of communities in Wisconsin are following. And I don't think that the time it takes contractors, with the rare exception to build the project we asked them to, is out of line with the industry in Wisconsin.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number five, relocation order for 18th Avenue Reconstruction, Paradise to Vote, revision to December 7, 2020, relocation order. Max?
Thank you. So on December 7, the Board of Public Works and Common Council approve a relocation order for the reconstruction of 18th Avenue. And that reconstruction, that relocation order included expanding the existing right-of-way, so we can build a full cross-section of the road. So the relocation order was passed with purchasing right-of-way from six properties. And along those properties, we already had right-of-way, and we were buying additional right-of-way. But was, what was missed at the time was the type of right-of-way that we were, that was existing there. The type of right-of-way was highway easement, and not actually an acquisition in fee. That means that the property owner still owned the land, and the city only had the right to have a road there. What we want to do, we want to have the land so that we can put the road there. So the new right-of-way that we're purchasing, we specified that that's what we want. We want to buy the land and put the right-of-way there. What we omitted to do was to say that, by the way, those portions where you property owner still owns the land, we want to own this land. So this new relocation order is to clarify that, so that the city can own the full right-of-way instead of having the right-of-way but with little pieces of land that are owned by private owners. So we have to go through this full process again. I apologize. But this time, I think we got it right. And this will not delay any portion of the project. The, the land acquisition is still on, on schedule, and everything else is still on schedule, even though we're, we're going back to this relocation order for, to move the project forward.
Okay, we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Any questions for Max? If none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Second.
Second, Justice? Okay, thank you. And most, opposed? Okay, motion carried. Item number six, approval of long-term storm water maintenance agreement, Mulberry Drive parking lot improvements. Max?
Thank you again. This is one of our typical storm water maintenance agreement that we enter in with property owners that receive a storm water management permit from the city. This agreement is to ensure that the property owner will maintain, properly maintain, any storm water management facilities, so that the storm, the storm water can be managed properly in the future as planned. So this agreement is for development at 501 511 Mulberry Drive, and the project is a parking lot extension. So we reviewed the proposed storm water management plan, and find it to be compliant with existing DNR and city rules. And we recommend that the Board and Council approve the agreement that is attached to the memo.
Okay, do you have a motion?
Second.
First and a second, all those in favor, or any questions for Max on this? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number seven, approval of long-term storm water maintenance agreement, Dairy Queen. Max?
Thank you again. So this is the same type of agreement for the Dairy Queen Project, located just north of City Hall here along Main Street at 1043 South Main Street. I won't go through the same speech again, but we recommend approval of the storm water management agreement with Dairy Queen.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Max. Okay, approval of municipal storm sewer easement, Quick Trip. Max?
Thank you again. So Quick Trip is proposing a development at 1637 West Washington Street. So it's at the southeast corner of 18th Avenue and Washington Street. And we are currently working on them at finalizing their storm water management plan. So at some point, I will be back with one of those agreements. But in the process, there is an existing storm sewer pipe that crosses the property. It's collecting water from 18th Avenue, which is coming from other properties to the west. And Quick Trip wants to move that pipe along the south edge of their property. And in order to allow the flow of water to continue going that way across their property through that new pipe that they're going to install, we need to have an easement to ensure that the pipe will remain, that there will be no obstruction to the water flow, and some other conditions that are listed in the agreement document. So in order to continue with the process, we recommend that the Board and Council approve the agreement with Quick Trip.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Yes, Alderman Allen?
Quick Trip pays for the relocation of the existing line?
Yes.
Are they going to decommission the line that exists, or simply work around it and leave it in place?
I am not sure, but I will say this. If they don't have any excavation in that area, I'm guessing they will simply buckheld it and then leave it there. If they do have excavation, they'll probably break it down and put fill in it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. If there are any more questions, motion to approve?
Second. Oh, no.
Oh, we already did. I mean, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Max.
Thank you.
Max, thank you very much. All right. Be no further business before the Board of Public Works. I adjourn. All right. Be no further business before the Board of Public Works. I adjourn.
All right. And with that, I will call to order the meeting of the Finance Committee. First on the agenda, we have the approval of minutes from the regular meeting on March 1.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the list, we have items 2 through 13 as part of the items for consideration. We'll start with item number 2, which is a resolution to accept donations to Park and Recs Department. And Mike Yance is here to present us.
Thank you. This evening, we have, this evening, we have five very impressive donations to bring forward to the council. The first donation is a new scoreboard at Quas Creek Park. This $6,000 donation is provided by the West Bend Athletic Association. The next donation is from Gears Incorporated. They installed a new wave-finding or bike trail marking system out of Glacier Blue Hills. This included the signposts, the signs, and 40 trail markers valued at $1,200. The third donation this evening is, comes from Enchantment in the Park, the Friends of Park and Recreation and the Regner Rejuvenation Group. Those three organizations teamed up together to renovate the old park workshop in Regner Park. This work included electrical improvements, a furnace, siding, a new roof, painting, and asphalt repairs. This team effort, this work with this team effort was valued at $47,163. The next donation is from the Early Risers Kiwanis of West Bend. They donated $5,000 for the new shelter located near the fish pond in Regner Park. And the final donation is the bird sculpture. This is being donated by the West Bend Friends of Sculpture. The sculpture will be located on Riverwalk along Veterans Avenue. At this time, we do not have a total value of the sculpture and the work associated with the installation, but we are asking for a formal donation, or formal acceptance of this donation. Thank you for the support. We'd like to say thank you for the support from all these groups. They certainly help make West Bend a better place to live and play. Thank you.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any questions for Mike? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mike, so much, and thank you to the donors.
Thank you.
Next on our list, we have a resolution accepting donations for the West Bend Fire Department. We have Chief Kudick here to present that.
Good evening again. Yes, we have before you a resolution to accept a donation of $50 from Michael Rose. He was a recipient of our free smoke detector program. He was happy with his smoke detectors and CO detectors and the fire safety review that he got of his house. And in return, he wanted to thank us, to give us a donation that can be used. And that money's going to go back into the smoke detector account, so we can continue to do that program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions?
I'd like to thank Mr. Rose for his donation.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, thank you to Mr. Rose for the donation.
Yes, and anybody out there that needs a smoke detector or CO detector, make sure you call the fire department. We have that program going to help out. And whether it's replacing smoke detectors or putting smoke detectors in residents that do not have any, we're happy to help and happy to come out and get them in there for you. Thanks.
Great program. Thank you. Next up, we have a resolution authorizing the sale and appropriation of funds for Parks and Rec surplus equipment. Mike?
Thank you. This evening, we are requesting to sell nine pieces of equipment at auction. These items have either been replaced with new equipment or equipment that is worn out and is no longer functional for city operations. The estimated auction value of all nine items is $40,100. We are requesting to retain $10,400 of the auction revenue to purchase a new utility vehicle. Basically, you can see in the one spreadsheet, we're getting rid of two utility vehicles. I think one's a 1997 and one's a 2000. Those two vehicles would go away, and we would replace it just with one vehicle. The remaining funds, auction revenues of 29, estimated at $29,700, would then be transferred to the sale of city property account. Thank you.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions for Mike? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Now, we have a resolution authorizing the sale and the appropriation of funds of fire department surplus equipment for a used ambulance with Chief Kudick.
Yes, you have before your resolution to accept, to sell a vehicle and then to reappropriate the money. The vehicle was our 2010 med unit. It was set to be replaced originally in 2020. We moved it up in Capital Projects to 2021 because of all the issues we were having with it. Unfortunately, it didn't cooperate, and at the end of 2020, the engine blew. However, when we did a cost-benefit analysis, it was decided not to fix it and just put it on auction and then rent the vehicle until the new one came, which is set to be delivered March 24. So, the price of this auction was $78.52 for the used vehicle. And we're asking that that money then be reappropriated into the fire rescue contract services to pay for the lease of the ambulance that we used over the last four months, as well as any other additional equipment we would need for the ambulance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Moving on, we have the item number six, unaudited 2020 general fund results with Carrie Winklebauer. Hi, Carrie.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I had attached the general fund revenues and the general fund expense reports for the fourth quarter of 2020. These are unaudited figures, as our annual audit actually began today. Overall, we ended the year with an estimated surplus of just over $120,000. There were some revenue accounts that were under budget at the end of the year, such as municipal court fines, violations, uncollectible AR, and also interest revenue. The main area that was over budget for expenses was for the landfill. There were several departments that came in under budget, such as police, fire, parks, and the public works salt expense account. At the end of 2020, our estimated undesignated fund balance compared to the 2021 budget will be at around 24.47%. This is a decrease from 26.87% from last year due to the required carried-forward amounts that I'll be presenting next, and also the TIF 9 new advance. Overall, the percentage of the 24.47% is in the range of our fund balance policy, which states 17% to 30%, as recommended by the GFOA. Does anyone have any questions at all?
Thank you for that report. I don't think, it's not a resolution. We don't need a motion or anything, Ian, Jay? No, okay. Thank you, Carrie, for your report, then.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $4,965,000 for street improvement projects.
I think you skipped over 7.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Carrie, I'm just jumping ahead. Okay. Next on the agenda, we actually have item number 7, which is a resolution approving carry-forward appropriations from 2020 to 2021. Carrie, thank you.
Okay, no problem. I had attached two different spreadsheets for the carry-forward request. The first spreadsheet was for the general fund, and the second spreadsheet was for the other funds, which included the debt service fund and also the communications fund. Jay and I had reviewed these lists and recommend that common council approve, and the finance committee approve, the amounts. General fund total was $559,657.03. The debt service fund is a total of $494,784.91. And the communications fund had a couple line items. The total was $8,306.82. The general fund unaudited 2020 results, like I had just stated before, were at a estimated net surplus of just over $120,000. So, for the general fund carry-forward amounts, that leaves just under $440,000 will be funded through the undesignated fund balance account for the required carry-forwards. Again, all the general fund ones that I had listed on that spreadsheet are either required by resolution or else we have existing contracts with those type of agreements. So, any questions at all for this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions for Carrie? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. That carries. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we will move forward. I believe it's John Cameron from Ellers is going to speak with us. Jay?
Do we need to do separate votes on both of the resolutions related to the?
I think we'll let John address that, whether he recommends resolutions for all individually or if we can group them together.
Okay.
Hey, John, can you hear us all right?
I apologize. You were breaking up just a little bit there. I think it was a question whether you had to take resolutions in total or one at a time. If that's the question, you'd have to take the resolution one at a time.
All right.
Thank you, John. All right. Thank you for joining us this evening, John. Do you just want to go ahead and jump on in it?
Sure.
Starting with the resolution? Go ahead.
I can give kind of overview of the financing here. And what I'm referencing is the pre-sale report for the issuance of $5,550,000 of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2021-A. The purpose for these bonds is for fire equipment, library, parks, and public grounds, as well as street improvement projects. The bonds are being issued as general obligation, which is subject to the city's 5% total debt limit. The, after the issuance of the bonds, the city would have approximately $48.8 million debt, geo-debt outstanding, which is approximately 30.5% of your total limit, with just over $111 million of remaining general obligation capacity. So, certainly in good shape from that standpoint. The term of the debt would be for 15 years. Principal would be due on April 1, starting in 2022 through 2036. And interest would be payable every six months, beginning October 1, 2021. The bonds would have a prepayment feature, which would be on April 1, 2029, or really any date thereafter. So, certainly a call feature with this debt issuance. We would be looking to go through the rating process, and I'll talk about that in just a second here. But currently, the city has a double-A rating with Standard and Poor's, and we'd be hoping to go through a solid affirmation of that rating as we go through the rating process on this offering. In terms of the method sale and placement, what we're looking for is to be soliciting these on a competitive basis, hoping for lots of bids, and to be present on council night, talking about how many bids the city received on this. In terms of the schedule, on page 5 of the pre-sale report, we're here tonight seeking authorization for the sale. We'd be looking to do the reading call with Standard and Poor's, as well as the due diligence call, kind of around the week of April 5, distributing the official statement around April 12. The sale would take place on April 19, so we'd take bids in the morning and be present that night with the sale results. And then, the estimated closing date is around May 6 of '21. The sizing for the issuance, in terms of the breakdown of that 5.5 million, is shown on page 6 of the pre-sale report. You can see the listing of projects. I know, in terms of the project listing, that from a road standpoint, bids came in better regarding 7th Avenue costs, as well as some water and sewer costs that were mistakenly added to the planned borrowing for this year. So, in total, road projects are about $1.47 million lower for '21, which is fantastic news. What we have planned for, in terms of the debt offering, is proceeding still with the original size and then reducing, knowing you also have a heavier borrowing in 2022, reducing the sizing, which we do have reflected in the pre-sale report, reducing the planned sizing in 2022, to use the proceeds from this issuance towards 2022 road-related projects. In terms of the estimated payment schedule, that's shown on page 7. Again, that'll be tightened up on the day of sale, once we get the bids from the winning bidder. And then, on page 8, which is kind of the larger fold-out page or larger page in your packet, really what that shows is the current tax rate for debt, given the existing debt service payments, less any abatement sources. And then, the planned issuance from not only the 2021 issue, but the next several years' worth of debt offerings out through the year 2028. So, this is really going into '22, where we show a reduced debt due to the cost reduction for 7th Avenue. And really, if you look at the far right-hand side of that page, in terms of the total debt service levy, existing debt plus estimated new debt, really what we're showing is that going into 2022, '23 and '24, really with the additional debt, we're still planning to keep the total debt service levy right around $3.7 million, which yields a tax rate for debt of around $1.28 per thousand, with some minor amount of growth assumed in the out year. So, very stable in terms of the overall projection for total debt service payments, as well as the overall tax rate. And then, the final item in the pre-sale report is the one-year trend in municipal bond rates. And you can see on that worksheet that, you know, rates going back a year ago, as things really shut down with COVID-19, we saw a spike in interest rates, and then rates settled back down going into the summer, really to historic low levels. We've continued along that trend up until very recently. We still are in a very, very low interest rate environment, but we did see some increase in interest rates, really at the end of February into the first part of March. And things have kind of stabilized at that level. So, with that, I'm happy to turn it back over and answer any questions.
Alderman Dolnick?
John, would, I know no one has a crystal ball, but I have been reading that Janet Yellen, I believe, has said, and some other economists have indicated some thought that inflation might start to go up, and interest rates may also follow. Do you have any thoughts about where we're headed for the municipal bond interest rates in the coming months and maybe through, you know, the end of the year?
Sure. I think, you know, depending on some of the underwriters that we've talked to in recent weeks, I think everyone is somewhat anticipating a gradual rise in interest rates. You know, how that's going to unfold, you're right. It's kind of a crystal ball that we'd be getting out. But I think, you know, in general, we did see, you know, some increase in rates, you know, at the end of February into March. You know, I think, you know, from some You know, I think, you know, from some of the underwriters that we're talking to, you know, the thought is that that gradual rise in interest rates may continue here, you know, over the next 12 months or so.
Alderman Kaler?
So help me understand, we've got, right now, borrowing roughly 1.4 million dollars more than what we need for these projects due to projects coming under bid. How do we tie the hands of next year's council, which who knows where that goes, and say, okay, next year, we're going to borrow 1.4 less? And we're just going to sit on that 1.4 million dollars for a year and do nothing with it? That doesn't make any sense to me. You know, if we don't need it, why are we borrowing it?
Couple, I guess, comments that I'll make on that. You have the ability to vet those funds and earn interest. I realize interest earnings are not the most robust right now, but you do have the ability to earn interest on that. Really what you're doing is you're, I think, you know, if you're considering borrowing the planned amount here, you have the ability to lock in at the day of sale on a fixed, at a fixed rate for the life of the debt in a low-interest-rate environment for not only this year's projects, but also a portion of next year's projects. So I think that's partially the advantage to that, and something that, you know, something worth considering as you go ahead here. But really, the resolutions are not to exceed resolutions. So if you give us the, you know, the direction to potentially reduce the borrowing, you know, within the next few weeks, we would need to kind of fine-tune that before we publish the official statement. But we still would have time to reduce that if that's the direction you'd so choose to move.
And you said, you know, we have the opportunity to earn some interest. We're also going to be paying interest for a year on money that basically we're going to just leave sit there. It's up to me. I would like, long as it was not to exceed, I would like us to scale this back to 1.4 and borrow the 4.1 or 4 million, whatever it is that we need to do the projects this year. That way, we're not tying the hands of the council next year, and we're also not saying, well, we've got an extra 1.5 now, now next year we borrow the same. We can't determine how that's going to go next year. I would like us to scale this back to the 4 million or 4.1 and borrow what we need.
Jay Shombo, City Administrator, is going to speak on that.
Thanks, John, for your presentation and feedback, and Alderman Kaler for your question. We did have that conversation with Phil Cossin and John and Carrie. Max was included in that chat, as well as what to do. Our hands are bound if you choose to borrow the 1.5. So staff is recommending, Ellers is recommending borrowing the entire 5.5 at this time, and we are bound to spend that money on roads. So you, you're right by saying no council can buy into future council. However, in this case, if you borrow the money for roads, it has to be spent on roads. And that specific amount is included in that road resolution that you'll be asked to be acting on in a few seconds. And fortunately, we wouldn't be recommending this if we didn't have a large road project in 2022, but we do. Fortunately, Phil was able to recalculate the pre-sale report, and if you saw that on page nine, the GO note series, it went down from the 1.8 addition to the normal three that we normally borrow, down to 3.4. So he already reflected the pre-sale report to include a lesser borrowing needed in 2022. So with the fact that you're, you are binding a bit the use of that money, because it has to be spent within a couple of years on a road, and we have a road project, and then coupled with the factor that there's lots of experts that are anticipating the interest rate going up, it's, again, I would just say staff recommendation. You folks get to vote and do what you want with, whether how much we borrow, but it's our recommendation to move forward the full amount now and borrow less in 2022.
Alderman Dolnick?
I understand what Alderman Kaler is saying, but as Jay said, we know that we're going to need these funds next year, some of these funds next year, because we do have the road projects. And my concern, which was reflected by John's comments also, is that it's likely the interest rates will be higher a year from now. And so if we're, it seems to me that it makes sense to get the money locked in now at a lower interest rate than taking our chances and waiting next year. We know that we would have to have, borrow the money one way or the other.
Yep, Jay?
One other bit of information that, you know, isn't included in your budget packet that's online and that you approved for the 2021 budget, but what's out there is through 2020. So our total debt through 2020 is listed in the budget packet as 51 million, just over 51 million. And Mayor Jenkins asked me today, and Carrie and Phil, to put together, what is the impact of this 5.5 borrowing? Because we've been talking about, through the budget discussions, that a bunch of debt's coming off, right? So as we talk about a bunch of debt coming off and borrowing 5.5 million new money, what's that impact? And that new impact is just under 50 million, so 49.9, it will be our debt load for 2021, which is down from 2020 at 51, even with this 5.5 borrowing. So that's just another piece of information, Mayor Jenkins. I know you asked the question, and I didn't share it back out with the full group, because we just came in this afternoon, but that's a piece that you might want to know as well. And then looking at, I'm sorry, let me just jump in one more time. So looking at Phil's pre-sale report, that 1.28 that John drove you to, the debt levy rate, and in the pre-sale report, page nine, he mentioned 3.7 million is what our debt levy is balancing out to for about the next 10 years. That equates to around $1.25, or 1.28 for the next two years, down from the 2020 percentage of 1.42s. So we are, we have lowered significantly, and I know this gets mentioned a lot, but since 2014, it's down from 79 million. From 2010, it's down from 94 million in total debt for the city of West Bend. That number has been, the per capita spending for debt has been divided in half over the last 10 years. And that's because of all the conservative and wise decisions that you folks have made regarding the lowering of our debt, so we have some capacity to do things in the future. And now we're doing these two large roads and keeping our debt capacity at the, or our debt rate at the same amount for, literally for the next 10 years, with that 3 million borrowing projected out.
John, did you have anything else, I'm sorry, that you needed to add here?
The only, thank you, the only item I was going to add is, we did look at the estimated true interest cost, which is what bond issuances are judged on in terms of the overall winning bidder. The estimated true interest cost right now, from a planning standpoint, is 1.67%. So one way we looked at it was, if you went out and borrowed 1.47 million at 1.67%, the estimated interest expense for one year is just under $25,000. So that'd be offset a little bit with interest earnings. But, you know, in terms of interest rate movement, if interest rates came up, you know, roughly 100 basis points, that would negate, between now and the time that you did your offering next year, that would negate this interest expense. So that gives you kind of a barometer in terms of potential interest rate expense in terms of, you know, borrowing now, locking in at a, you know, a low-interest-rate environment versus borrowing a year from now. If you look at, you know, back on the pre-sale report, the last page, that jump in rates at the end of February to March, that's roughly 40 basis points. So 100 basis points swing would be 1%. So 1% movement in interest rates, and you'd be, you know, worse off waiting a year from now versus, you know, borrowing now at what we're estimating from a pre-sale standpoint.
Alderman Kaler?
I guess I still don't like the fact that we're borrowing 1.5 million, and for at least four of us up here, we may have no say in how that goes next year. We borrowed that money this year, yes, it earmarked for projects next year, but that doesn't mean our coming council doesn't say, well, we need to borrow more. I just don't understand why we want to borrow money to just sit on it and not use it. If we're going to borrow it, then let's find a project and use it. Otherwise, I'm not for borrowing this money.
Thank you. Is there any other, Alderman Dolnick?
I'm sorry, but maybe I'm missing something here. If we are borrowing the money now, do we have to, as Randy is saying, sit on it until next year? It cannot be used this year for road construction? Or is this because the road construction has been set already for this year? Is that the issue?
I think what it is yet, I'm guessing we could probably use it, but to try and get a project of that size bid out and done yet in this year, I mean, it generally takes Max quite a few months to get a project like that rolling. I don't think we'd have the time unless we took a bunch of little ones, and even then now, most of your summer construction projects are already bid out, and guys' calendars are full. I can't see how we could spend this on a substantial project this year. I see Jay's nodding his head, so I think he would agree with that.
I do agree, and that's why we are pointing at 18th, because that's a road we're actively designing now for construction in 2022. I'll also add that, you know, we have a history of borrowing annually. Some municipalities only borrow once every two years. Some municipalities nearby here only borrow once every two years. Hartford, for example, does. And they use those proceeds for the next couple of years. So this isn't uncommon, it's uncommon for West Bend, because we have a history of borrowing for what we need every year, and then reset that number annually. But it's not out of the question to do what you're being asked to do today.
Do we have any further questions or discussion before, otherwise, we can start taking up the resolution items one by one? Is that what John suggested? Okay, all right. Any other questions, then? All right, we'll start with number eight. The initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $4,965,000 for street improvement projects.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. The motion carries. All right, next on the list is going to be item number nine. Initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed 350,000 for fire department equipment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 10, the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed 40,000 for library projects.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number seven, the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed 195,000 for parks and public ground projects.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Resolution number 12, resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issues.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then the last one is the resolution providing for the sale of not to exceed 5, do we, 5,500,000 general obligation corporate purpose bonds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. All right, with that, that motion carries. And no further issues on the finance committee, I will now adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Alderman Kennedy. So I'll call back to order the city of West Bend Common Council meeting, and we are on item number three, presentation by Kettlemore ATV Association. I believe we're going to start with an introduction by Ian Andor-Jay. Take it away.
So this is coming out of a request that was made by the ATV Association for a charity ride. Essentially, what we're looking for today is, it's not formal action, we're just looking for some guidance as to whether this is something the council would like to see move forward, in which case, we would need to prepare an ordinance that would be brought forward to allow for ATV, UTV routes within the city that could be established. If that's the case, we would prepare that and bring it to the next meeting.
And I'll just share that we've met with the ATV, UTV Association of Washington County a few times, and the mayor's had a chance to meet with him, Max, and Chief Moyler. They've, they're also prepared to make an application through the special event process of reviewing by department heads. And the thought process was, let's bring this to council first. If there's not political will to move forward with this and make that, or even consider that draft ordinance in the future, then why would we spend staff time on approving something that we don't have the authority to approve? So that's why it's before you first, if you're wondering, but there are lots of individuals in attendance tonight, department-head-wise, that have had some preview to what this proposal is.
We do have a presentation, but I see Alderman model this.
Just a question, yeah. Yeah, have we done anything like this before? No.
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay.
All right, so we do have Tim here, from the ATV, UTV Charity Ride, who's going to present and tell us about this new thing. Go ahead.
Do you mind if I take my mask off, so it's a little clearer?
Thanks.
All right. Well, first, thanks for having me tonight. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I kind of want to go over what we do, why we do it, that kind of stuff, real quick. Our club was formed 15 years ago, here in Washington County. In 2008, we started a charity ride up north in the mountain area, and I'll get into that a little bit later. But now that, excuse me, now that there's so many townships that are opening road routes, we have the ability to bring the charity ride down here into southeastern Wisconsin. So what we would like to do is, we would like to hold the event at the Fair Park in one of their buildings. Our problem is, oops, and this isn't the best map in the world, but the yellow arrow points to where the fairgrounds are. North of the city of West Bend, you'll see a lot of green and yellow routes. Those are so-called preferred routes. There are a lot more routes open, but we're not going to put on this map every little road that goes to a dead end. But as we leave the Fair Park to get to the road routes, we hit a stumbling block of the city, obviously. The only way that we can see to get out of the fairgrounds is to come out the Town of Polk on last Monday night, a week from tonight. They passed an ordinance allowing for the temporary use. So we can get all the way up to the city. Then we need to get through the city, obviously. And what we would suggest is using Scenic, Villa Park, and Wolf Drive. But we would also request, and it doesn't show up real great on here, but the dashed marks, those streets to get to businesses, hotels, restaurants, gas stations, those kind of establishments. So at this point, what we need is, we would need some type of an ordinance. We sent a packet to the city. In there, there was an ordinance that mostly follows what other communities, the town- the townships in the area are following, although since we aren't asking for, we're not asking for permanent access, we're just asking for temporary. I did adjust it a little bit, just so that it would more focus on the temporary versus the permanent. We would know that we would need to sign the route, and we would work with the city on that. We know that we have to follow the Uniform Traffic Control Device Manual and all that. I am part of a group of five of us that have been working on this project with the townships for the past two, two and a half years. We have actually discussed with the State Department of Transportation, quite a few of the, if you will, the ways of doing it, the uniformity. Myself and another individual read through that entire book, and I think ATV is in there like maybe five times, and there's a whole chapter for bicycles alone. So we didn't want to start something, and then we do something accidental, we end up hitting a fiber optic line, or who knows, and now we have real issues. So just so that there's a little bit of background, we are familiar with the signing and all that, so we will definitely work with the city. And, you know, if the city says, we want to put them up, that's fine, we don't have any issues with that. But just so that everybody knows, we understand. I threw a few Wisconsin laws in here. These are some basic laws that we get asked quite often. So I figured they're easy to address in a few minutes here. The first one is the registration. All machines would have to be registered. They also have to have a license plate, like what's on the back of the ATV here. It's white and it's black blocked letters. Anybody born on or after January 1st of 1988 would have to have a ATV safety certificate. So that now makes anybody 33 years of age and younger have to have that, even if they have a driver's license or, you know, whatever, they still would have to have that. In the class, they talk about the safety. They also talk about the laws and the ethical aspects of riding. Anyone under the age of 18 has to wear a helmet, DOT-approved helmet. So if somebody was riding in a machine, like these two youngsters, they'd have to have a helmet on. If a, let's say, 17-year-old was operating a UTV, they would have to have a helmet on. Once you hit 18 in our state, you know, from motorcycles and stuff, there is no mandatory helmet law. Now, we highly suggest helmets, just because of the safety aspect of it. All machines have to have their headlights on. This is a, I shouldn't say temporary. It's an addition. You used to have to have your headlights on on roads all the time, but you didn't on trails. And what happened sometimes was people would have their lights off on the trail, they would get to a road route, go down, and they would be illegal. Now, everybody has to have them on all the time, so hopefully that takes care of some of that. There are noise limits. In the state of Wisconsin, you can't exceed 96 decibels, and that's figured out on a certain way of measuring it. That's above my head. And just in case everybody doesn't know, currently, by state statutes, somebody can operate a UTV or an ATV in the city already. You can go up to two miles, there's other criteria and things like that that you have to follow, but you can go up to two miles. And the reason that I bring that up is, what we're asking for in our proposal is 2.1 miles. So it kind of correlates with the distance that is in for snow plowing aspect. Now, obviously, this is different, we understand that. But just the two miles and vaguely two miles and how that plays into it. For our event, we do plan on having, they're called Trail Patrol ambassadors. We have them in the ATV, UTV community. There is also Trail Patrol ambassadors for like four-wheel-drive trucks, Jeeps, that kind of thing. And we're in discussion with them to see if we could get some of them and their vehicles in case, you know, we have to get someplace quicker or whatever. The Trail Patrol Ambassador program is not law enforcement. They're volunteers. They basically are eyes and ears for us, if you will, self-policing, okay? We have people out there, they're watching, and if something, somebody does something inappropriate on, maybe on accident, they turn down a wrong road on accident. If the trail patrollers are there, they can correct it very quickly, and we can, you know, continue on. They can also contact law enforcement if necessary. If, let's say, they see something and somebody's doing something excessive, we will have, each one of them will have a sheet that has law enforcement contacts, the city, obviously the counties in the area, the DNR wardens, et cetera. We also have been in contact with the Warden Service. It sounds like at this point, now, obviously, we're about six months still out, but it sounds like they may be bringing in a few wardens for, you know, the presence aspect, having just the visual of law enforcement, having the visual of the trail patrollers all combined to try to keep tabs on things. We don't expect any problems. This is for a charity event. I'll get to that in just a second here. But the people that are coming to it are donating to charity. They're coming to try to help put a positive image on the sport. So really, by having Trail Patrol, having the wardens, all it is is being that extra layer of protection, if you will. So I mentioned a couple times, I would get into this. I'll give a real quick history. In 2008, we started the charity ride. We held it in Mountain, at the Mountain Springs Motel for the first nine years. You can see our awesome dinner there, the frozen pizza. And then the bottom picture there is a, I'll call it a circus tent, a 40-by-40 tent that we held it in, like year five or six on. We then outgrew that area. Oh, I'm sorry. We initially did it for chicks for a cause. We raised 80, just under $85,000 for them. Then we hit kind of a stumbling block. We got to the point where we had more people coming than we had lodging for, we had restaurants for, and that kind of stuff. So we moved it to the city of Anago in 2017. There, obviously, there's more hotels, lodging, restaurants, gas stations, et cetera. At that time, we partnered with the Anago Area ATV Club and the Wisconsin ATV Association. We finally got indoors, climate-controlled, and our dinner, you can see, is catered. We really had swung things in a whole new direction. We raised just under $90,000 for Make-A-Wish in those three years. In total, and I don't put this on good, bad, or indifferent, just so that everybody kind of has an idea of, you know, how much we've made over the years, slightly over $175,000 for the two charities. Last year, we didn't have a ride because of COVID, but our club did donate some to the cause. Our best year was in 18, 2018. That year, we raised $35,000 for Make-A-Wish. And why does this all matter? Well, unfortunately, we have masks on here today, but Dave, if you would like to come up. We met Dave through the Make-A-Wish Foundation, and if you may, or if I may, if I can turn it over to him for just a few minutes, let him explain why this makes a difference.
Thanks, Tim. Thank you for hearing this. First and foremost, like Tim said, this is a temporary, it is a charity thing. A lot of people see the charity, well, that's nice, you know, a feel-good thing. As you can still see in the picture, that is our family. I have a little guy that, being polite and not to get too emotional about it, he has a lot of medical conditions that we were actually nominated by three different providers for the Make-A-Wish event. We ended up getting a wish. Unbeknownst to us, the group that facilitated that wish happened to be the UTV Club. They wanted to reach out to a family sort of get to know them. What we didn't understand and really adhere to so much as in this charity, what really occurs, you know, why are we coming to you today saying, hey, let's make this happen? The Make-A-Wish did help our family. It had changed it tenfold. That 2017 that they went to Anago, our family participated in. We went back in the following year to participate. So it wasn't a one-time event where it was a charitable thing and one-and-done, it's forgotten. It has created a lifelong effect on our family. So our family is one instance. That 84,000 Tim had mentioned, on average, Make-A-Wish, at least prior to COVID, it's roughly $5,000, $6,000 to grant a wish. At $85,000, that's affected many families. Those wishes give people normalcy. You're going into an atmosphere where you feel special, cared for, but at the same time, the Make-A-Wish Foundation, it puts you in touch with families and groups that care. It gives you that feel-good environment. So it's a great organization to at least ask for this temporary permission for. It's not a organization where it's a one-and-done. They've been around for many years. Anyone can walk up to you and say, hey, make a wish, you'll know exactly what it's about. But the way it affects families and individuals is top-notch. Our family has now become sort of, I'll call it a family, what would you even call it, to the ATV club. We're involved even with the ATV club, even though we had no clue what it was all about. They treat our family, even though we have a lot of medical issues, as if there are any other ATV provider, user. The one thing, I guess I'd like to interject, not necessarily for the Make-A-Wish side, but just the organization that they do present, us attending it, I obviously fall under that older-than-33. So I didn't need all the training and so forth, however, I had had it prior to that. But going into this event, and they said, we're doing a charity ride, it was one of the best organized and maintained rides, unbeknownst of the charitable aspect of it. Every person that was a, what was it called, ambassador of the trail? Every person, they knew exactly when to turn left, when to turn right. So it wasn't that people were randomly going in all different avenues and routes and locations. Every person at the event I met was respectable, responsible. So it's not that it was a big party to have a charity event. It's well-kept, well-organized, well-maintained. So I guess I urge you to consider it that it's not just a one-time charity event for an ATV club. It's impacting many families in the area. I mean, I've been living here for now 25 years myself. So it's very appreciative, and we hope you favor it and make a notion forward. Do you have anything else?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So that was the presentation. We'll tick up that item shortly here in our agenda, okay?
Can I, can I ask a few questions of Mr. Rocher?
Can you wait till 15? Do we get to number 15? Then we can. Yep. So move on to consent agenda for items four through 14, but we're going to be taking out items five and six to vote separately.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Motto and Alan. All those in favor, sort of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And Alderman Butch, if you can take numbers five and six.
Okay. An appointment of Agent Michael J. Zorzen, QuickTrip LLC, QuickTrip number 1002, 806 South Main Street. I have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number six, approve municipal storm sewer easement, QuickTrip.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thanks, John. And we'll jump into agenda items for consideration. Number 15, proposal for requesting an ordinance for temporary ATV routes in the city of West Bend. Now I can open up for questions. Megan, go ahead.
Yep. So I, statements and questions. I have met with Mr. Rocher. He was very responsive. I do also want to point out, he spent his career as a police officer, which I thought was, thank you for your service. But also, I think that that helped me understand his impact and his point of view on safety for his ATV club. I will say that this full charity ride, the two-mile stretch, does go solely through my district. I have reached out to some constituents, including the Villa Park Neighborhood Page, posted up some questions and comments for people to reach out to me, see what the feedback was. I will say, probably 20 residents reached out to me to give some feedback. Two people were hands-down no. You know, they're concerned about safety and things like that. I would say at least five or six people were very pro ATV, telling me, open it up forever and make the whole city ATV-friendly. So there were a few of those. I told them, that's not what's on the table right now. That's not what we're dealing with. And then I would say the majority of the people were in favor of the fact that it's a charity ride, it's a one-weekend event, it is bringing business around, and it is a short stretch of road. The main concerns that people, obviously those middle people kind of had, was that if stop signs will be obeyed and speed limits, which my understanding from my talks with Mr. Rocher is that on the road, the vehicles are treated as road vehicles, meaning 25 mile-per-hour speed limit through our neighborhood would be the legal limit for them, as well as needing to observe traffic symbol, signals, stop signs, stoplights, and things like that. So that also made me feel better, knowing his focus on safety. And that was really the only objection I kind of had heard from people. But overall, I would honestly say, my neighborhood, the people that I talked to, were overall pretty supportive of the idea of this.
Sounds good. Alderman Kaler?
Chief, got any input? I think it's a great idea, but I'd like to know what your thoughts are.
No, I would just say that based upon what my meetings with Tim, we would not, we would have some special attention. We would just enforce the traffic law like we would any other stuff. As Megan just said, they have to abide by all the ordinances. So it'd be no different. We've had road rallies come through the city. We've had bikes rides come through the city where they are obeying all the ordinances. We're not closing off any streets. We're not doing, you know, even like having people at an intersection stopping. His people will go out kind of in groups, but their groups may get broken up because they got to abide by the speed limits and the stop signs and stoplights. And so, and they all understand that.
And I would assume you guys would just add an extra attention to that area during those couple days.
That's exactly right.
Thanks.
We'll go, Alan, Butch, like, and then Dolick. Go ahead.
Do we have a specific date request here?
Yes. It's going to be in September, and it will be the 9th, 10th, and 11th, those days. The first two days are basically prep rides, making sure that we have the right leaders in place, that the leaders know where they're supposed to go, where they're not supposed to go, that kind of stuff. The big event is on Saturday itself, and that will be at the fairgrounds. We'll have a riders' meeting type thing in the morning. We'll send them off, like the chief was saying, when they get to the city here, they may get broke up a little bit. We'll have to figure out some things with the probably Trail Patrol ambassadors to try to get groups back together, that kind of stuff. And then they'll go out and they'll ride. They can ride up to like Glambula, to Fond du Lac area, into Dodge County. So they'll go off, they'll have lunch, and then on the way back, they'll be coming back through, because it's the only way in and out. And then it'll probably be broken up more, because once they all scatter, obviously lunches will be at different times and that kind of stuff, and then they'll come back through.
Is the expectation that people will trailer to Washington County Fair Park or, and then go from there, or that people will drive in on their ATV? go from there, or that people will drive in on their ATVs?
I don't know exactly how to answer that this year, only because it's the first year. I know that we won't have everybody that follows from the Antigo area down. So, you know, we'll have to pick up new people. Now whether those are people that live on routes right around here that can get to it, I don't know. I will say this, my guess, my best guess is that most are going to trailer to the Washington County Fair Park, and then they will, they'll leave from there.
And you made reference to following traffic rules. So, you know, the route crosses 33, which is, on a good, nice summer weekend, has a lot of traffic.
Yep.
How do you handle that? You cross, I guess, at scenic, so there is a light. You'll only cross when the light allows you to the, and this is probably for the chief, but are those lights timed or censored, and will they notice, you know, a motorcycle-sized vehicle at that point?
This intersection has what we call loop detectors in the street, and they will pick up the UTVs. Their magnetic field is broken when a vehicle drives on them, so they pick up motorcycles.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Butch? Yep, I have a question. You mentioned something about the signs. Are you going to supply the ATV signs posting?
Yes.
Okay, and then you mentioned something, maybe the city will put those up?
Well, I don't know. I mean, it would be something we'd have to talk about.
Something that you would do?
We can. I've been involved with this other group called Kettle Trails through, I think we've done like 30 different municipalities. So we've worked with the DOT. We know what we're doing. But again, we would work with the city versus just going out and doing the, putting them up at night type thing.
Okay, all right. And the other question was, the area that you're going to be going, scenic drive, I have a, I know that's, that's a dangerous intersection, that's a dangerous section of street there. You've got hills, and there are a lot of traffic because of Cedar Lake back there. Are you going to have like monitors in that area to kind of, because some people just are impatient after they're behind SUVs, I mean, yeah, ATVs or SUVs, they're going to have a little bit of anxious to get around them. Is there going to be somebody that's going to be able to monitor areas like those situations?
Yes. Again, we're in the planning process. We, everything's not finalized 100%. But the Trail Patrol ambassadors, I think our intent, and I say think because it's not finalized yet, but I think our intent is to have the majority of them in, like from the Fair Park up through maybe a little ways north of the city someplace. And that way, we can direct people where they need to go. And if something like that were to come up, we can stop our people and let the traffic go.
All right, okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Alderman Dolik, yep?
Do you have any estimate of about how many vehicles might be coming through?
I don't exactly. The last couple years that we did it in Antigo, we had, and I got to give a range because obviously every year's not the same, between about 150 and 175 people register. Now, in today's world, not everybody has their own ATV anymore. So now you can get, like in that one picture, it was a four-person machine. My wife and I have a two-person machine. So the actual number of machines, I would just guesstimate probably between 75 and 100. And that, again, is a guesstimate.
As far as I'm concerned, if the police department doesn't object, and the alderman for the district says it's okay, I mean, that's fine with me then.
Any other questions? Alderman?
Has any thought been given to providing extensions of routes to get people, you know, for their night stays, get them to hotels? I mean, there's, I think, a couple of hotels you could drive to, given the route, but there's a number of hotels that you can't get to, given the route. So.
We have considered, our thought on this was to come and ask for the mandatory, what we had to have to get through the city. And then because you can kind of wing off of it, to get to some places, to just basically stop with asking there for this year. Let us prove ourselves. Let us show that we can do this versus asking for all kinds of things, and then we can't, or, you know. I don't doubt that we won't be able to, but just in case, you know, I mean, I know people have questions. Obviously, there's constituents that are concerned. So our thought was, keep it as small as can be this year, and then if everything works out and things go good, then we can work with the city, and maybe we can get to the other hotels or restaurants or whatever.
And that jumps off with what was going to be my question. You were in Antigo for three years, and I don't mean to be biased, but I hope that you stay in the great city of West Bend, you know, a little bit longer. So is this, are you in it for the long haul here, or?
Well, this is our plans. This is our home. The first 14 years, well, the first nine for sure, we didn't have anything really down here. So there was just no way that we were going to be able to do it. So we went up there. We hauled all of our stuff up there. We all paid for our hotels, you know, and that kind of stuff. And then when we went to Antigo, then we had some more help up there and so on. But now, we want to bring this down here. This is our home. We are from the Washington County area, and I say area because we have some members that are from surrounding counties. But myself, I live in Washington County. Most of us live in Washington County. When our club was formed, we formed right here in the great city of West Bend. And then we got kicked out of a couple of places because they closed. And so now, we're outside the city of West Bend where we hold our meetings, but, but we are here to stay.
Good to know. Any other questions?
Can we work together a little bit more before September, though? Please keep me in the loop if this does move forward. Just, you know, the trail ambassador thing and setting up maybe locations and signage through the neighborhood and things like that. I definitely want to make sure we're sitting in, staying close.
Absolutely. We, obviously, we have tried to be very forthcoming and get a jump on this and have lots of communication with the city versus coming to you in the early September and saying, hey, we're looking for this. Our feeling was, let's get out ahead of it, and let's be very open about what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Thanks, Tim. I'll just look at Jay. Are you just looking for a nod of heads at this point to move forward?
Yep, thumbs up, level of acceptance for this from the group. And then we'll task Ian with drafting an ordinance for a future meeting.
Sounds good. Thanks so much. Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Dave. Thank you for wanting to put on this great event, and stay safe.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll move on to item number 16, award contract 21-03, Forest Avenue Reconstruction, Lindwood Terrace to Water Street. Max, did you have anything else on this?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Second.
I'm sorry, who's the motion? Kayler, thank you. Got that. Are there any other questions on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, sort of by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. On 17, award contract 21-01, Seventh Avenue Reconstruction of Walnut Street to Washington Street.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. Allen and Moll, any questions on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor, sort of by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And number 18, approve 14th amended agreement for the operation of the Mid-Morene Municipal Court. This is back. Jay, do you want to just cover this one?
Sure. The Village of Jackson objected to Polk, Town of Polk joining, so we had to have another resolution to bring back this group without Polk at this time.
So I'll wait for a motion first. Your motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. And did you have a question?
Yeah. Do we know why Town of Jackson, is Town of Jackson or Village of Jackson?
Village of Jackson objected. I don't know details. I'm not sure if Chief Moeller does. I believe it was just due to their small volume of cases that the Town of Polk had, that they felt it wasn't worth dealing with them. I can ask Kathy Booth to come, who is the court clerk, if you'd like to share more details on that, but that's all I really know.
So what are the next steps then? Does Polk creep up this, or?
Bayside tried to join us, Village of Bayside tried to join us a few years ago, and there was a negative vote in that era too. So they might ask to come back at a future time, but at this point, this would just be it.
Okay, got it. So that we do have a motion second. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, sort of by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to 19, ordinance repealing section 5.207, paragraph 2B of the municipal code, with presentation by Chief Kudak. Welcome.
Welcome. I thought I'd start off by reading the entire code for you. Just kidding. Yeah, we brought this before you, February 1st. There was supposed to be another line omitted, and that was the, we were taking out the annual fee for the fire alarm permit, and somehow that did not get taken out in the final resolution. So we're coming back before you tonight to take that last line out. So there will be no fee for, an annual fee for a fire alarm system.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, that went to Dolik and Allen. A discussion of questions. Seeing none, all those in favor, sort of by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thanks.
And we'll take these resolutions one by one. The first is number 20, initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $4,965,000 for street improvement repairs.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Moll and Allen. And knowing there might be discrepancy in votes, Steph, if we could have a roll call?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Burquist?
Aye.
Alderman Kayler?
Aye.
Alderman Dolik?
Aye.
Alderman Moll?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And number 21, initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $350,000 for the fire department equipment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Moll and Allen. Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, sort of by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number 22, initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $40,000 for library projects.
Motion approved.
Second.
I don't know who had that, so I'll just give it to everybody. Everybody's really excited about these library projects. All right. Then all those in favor, sort of by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number 23, initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $195,000 for parks and public grounds projects.
Second.
Thank you. Kayler and Allen. A discussion on this one. Seeing none, all those in favor, sort of by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number 24, resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issues.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Moll. Any question on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, sort of by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number 25, resolution providing for the sale of not to exceed $5,550,000 of general obligation corporate purpose bonds.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Moll and Allen. And this one as well, if we could please have a roll call vote.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Burquist?
Aye.
Alderman Kayler?
Aye.
Alderman Dolik?
Aye.
Alderman Moll?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then we have 26, a resolution approving carry forward appropriations from 2020 to 2021. I don't know if Carrie's still here, but was there anything else? I don't see her, never mind.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Second.
Allen and Moll. Any other questions on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, sort of by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we'll move on to reports. A report by Alderman Moll regarding the bid board meeting. Take it away.
Thank you, Mary Jenkins. We, the bid board met on March 2nd, right here in the council chambers. Let me see, I guess. We did a financial report. Jess Wildes gave us a financial report. We got a marketing committee report. Kathy Murphy led a spirited discussion on if the bid should get involved in any kind of marketing, and if so, what would that look like? Going to, we're going to survey the bid population for help answering that question. We also discussed the need for fixing or updating the downtown roofline lights. Jess Wildes presented an engineering and design proposal by Rob Steiner. Board members look forward to digging deeper into this with Rob in person next meeting. We also had a, yeah, a report on doing the downtown, what's the word I'm looking for? Anyways, the communications manager, Nicole Bell, has catalogued and photographed each of the buildings in the proposed district, the historic district, I'm sorry, I lost the word. Bell will write historical narratives on the whole district and all building therein. Save the date of Monday, May 17th, at Old Settlers Park at 8:00 AM. We're doing a city cleanup, see the city website, or talk to Jess for info. The next meeting will be at April 6th, where we will discuss further the roofline lights, Riverwalk update, 2020 annual report, and survey questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Alderman Moll? Moving on to number 28, a report by Alderman Butch or Dolik regarding the plan commission meeting. Who's taking this? Alderman Dolik?
Yep. It was a short, relatively short meeting. We approved a site plan exception to allow a larger monument sign for dental practice on West Washington Street. We did the public hearings for TIF number 10 and TIF number 15, which combined make up the proposed project for replacing the brewery building, and both passed. And then we set a public hearing for a, on behalf of a applicant who wants to change the zoning of 32, almost 33 acres in the area of Daisy and Clearview, from single-family to two-family. And that will be coming up in front of Plan Commission next month, I believe.
Thank you. Any questions for Alderman Dolik? Seeing none, we'll move to our last item, number 29, a report by Alderman Dolik or Kennedy regarding the health insurance committee meeting. Let us know how that's been going.
Do you want to do it? You know, the update is, you know, we've had a few meetings. We've looked at comparing plans. We have a request into the state plan to see if we can get a quote from them. Alex from, what is the name of the firm? Alex from?
The Horton Group.
Horton Group. The Horton Group came and answered some questions for us. He is going to come back with a little bit of homework on us on looking at a few other comparisons using our actual numbers, I would say. So still working on it.
Nice. Has the committee talked about an estimated timeline when you'll be finishing up, or what do you think? It's okay if it's fluid?
It's pretty, I would say it's fluid. I mean, you know, the numbers from the state, I think we're getting back probably, I think they asked for like six to eight weeks, and that was a couple of weeks ago. So I think we want to at least be able to, you know, we paid for that proposal. We want to see what that comes back at, in addition to what Alex has for us. So.
Sounds good.
Depending on that.
Yep. Any other questions for Alderman Kennedy? And I'll open up. If there's any announcements for the good of the order, Alderman. Yep, go ahead.
West Bend Lakes Golf Clubhouse burned down yesterday, and the owners of the club have expressed appreciation for the fire and police departments that came to their assistance. So kudos to the fire, I'm not sure, did the police department get involved? No. Kudos to the fire department for a fine job.
Absolutely. Any other announcements? I'll just announce that Administrator Shambow and I are gluttons for punishment, I guess. We are hosting a Coffee with the City event this Saturday from 8:00 to 10:00 in the morning at Skinny Vix. We're trying to make this a semi-regular thing to just get out of the public and meet residents.